Good afternoon. This is a regular city commission meeting for the City of Largo for June 16th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is an in-person meeting. We do have a couple commissioners that are joining us over the Internet. Commissioner Carroll and Commissioner Finger will be joining us through a go-to-meeting platform. We're going to start with an invocation given by Pastor Josh Poole from Mission City Church, and then if we could please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and ask that you would be with us as we go forward in this meeting. Father, you said in your Word in the Book of James, Chapter 1, Verse 5, that if we ask of wisdom that you would give it to us without reproach. Those who ask must not doubt but believe, for those who doubt are like the waves of the sea driven and tossed by the wind. Father, I just pray that you would guide this meeting tonight, Lord, that you would be honored, and we just thank you for the opportunity to be here, and we pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
The first item on the agenda is a ceremonial item. We'll hear about the employees of the quarter.
Well, this is just really exciting to do. It's good to be back in person. We had to postpone our awards that were given in February, so we are very proud to go through the recipients for February, the recipients for May. So our first employee of the quarter is Jean Amy, who is traffic sign and marking technician with Public Works. This gentleman is in charge of all the signs in the entire city, not a small task considering how many signs are present in the city. When a car ran into a stop sign in one of the cul-de-sacs of a Vancouver drive on Presidents' Day, Jean came out on the same day and replaced the sign in no time. Jean puts the city's needs before his own. Granted, this job and all the credit needs to be where credit is due. He is professional, courteous, and a most wonderful representative of the city. Congratulations, Jean.
Normally, they're all here, so they start the applause, but...
Yes, yes, yes. Chris Borman is our next recipient. She's the office administrator in Recreation, Parks, and Arts. Chris tackles her tasks quickly and efficiently. She does her best to make all of the processes she's involved in as easy as possible, not just for herself, but also for others who have a part in those processes. A huge task she is responsible for and is in the process of accomplishing is hiring 70 seasonal employees for summer during this COVID season. Besides processing applications, she handles the entire HR function herself for summer hiring. This includes coordinating interviews with candidates, hiring managers, childcare screening, background checks, hiring paperwork, fingerprinting, and tracking the entire process step by step. Chris is smart, hardworking, involved, and has excellent ideas and works towards favorable solutions with everyone. Gary Dryden, wastewater instrumentation technician. Gary has been an employee of the City of Largo for over 34 years and displays passion and creativity when working on special assignments. Staff relocated a stationary generator to lift Station 26 that had been sitting idle at the plant for over two years. Six months after installing it, the generator had malfunctioned, which is the section of the generator that produces emergency power to the station. Usually, this type of repair would be performed by an outside contractor, but after receiving a quote for almost $27,000, it was decided to replace the generator head ourselves. Gary recommended changing the generator control logic panel. Gary traced all the sensor wiring, drew a schematic, and installed the new generator control panel, wired all the sensors, and connected all of the high-voltage lines. Gary finished wiring the unit back to the station, tested, and determined all correct information was being displayed on the generator control panel digital screen. It would have cost the city over $32,000 to have a contractor replace both the generator and logic control panel. Congratulations, Gary, for excellent work. Chris Hankstenberg, Plans Examiner. Chris works with other city departments on a daily basis while conducting plan reviews. He continues to impress me with his commitment to the City of Largo. He is the first call by any of our inspectors, fire inspectors, when they have a code violation question because of his level of knowledge and familiarity with the codes we reference. Most recently, Chris has taken on a newer code requirement for Largo by direction of the Fire Marshal, the install of bi-directional amplifier systems and tests associated. These radio systems/signals are what all first responders rely on while inside of a structure during any emergency. Without these systems, some buildings do not allow for any radio communications to be sent or received, which could mean life or death. This is just one of the extremely critical systems which he is solely responsible for reviewing for proper equipment, permitting, professional credentials, install plans, and any other components of the process for a life safety system. Chris is an example to all of what the city stands for and expects out of their employees. We're lucky to have Chris as an employee with the city and feel his hard work and dedication should be recognized. Now, we have our May recipients. The first is Rondell Haynes, Custodian. Rondell is the glue to the custodial team. He cares for us, ensuring that our schedules are optimal for taking care of the buildings, and takes care of all his team members with PPE, supplies, and any items we might need. He holds us to high standards for keeping our buildings in top shape for our citizens to return and support our lovely city. Matt Butler, Assistant Building Official. Matt encompasses integrity, collaboration, and passion for his team and customers. He is truly an asset to the City of Largo. As the Assistant Building Official, Matt wears many hats. He works hand-in-hand with the Building Official, Permitting Supervisor, and Chief Building Inspector. When a permit tech needs assistance, he's right there to jump in and support them, whether it's answering a question about a permit or assisting them with a difficult customer, Matt is always there. When it was announced that City Hall would be closed to the public, he and the permit supervisor knew they needed ways for customers to still be able to apply for permits and keep the flow going. Matt began working on ways to be able to apply for more permits electronically through Trackett, working closely with IT, James De Palma, and permit tech supervisor Alyssa Abels. They have been able to pull off getting almost every permit done online, making it that business flowed as usual. Congratulations, Matt, on your excellent work ethic and contributions to the City of Troy Wilcox, Information Technology Specialist. During the pandemic, Troy has been outstanding. He knows how important it is for him to physically be at the police department even though most of his coworkers are working remotely. He's diligent about all CDC recommendations and wants to keep both himself and the officers he works with healthy. When he was told that he had to make a backup 9/11 communication center because of the virus, he handled moving all of the equipment as has a plan ready in case we need to utilize the backup during this emergency. Troy always has a positive attitude and is an absolute pleasure to work with. He definitely deserves a free day off when this event is over. Now, we have our final employee of the quarter and then two operational managers of the quarter. Our last employee of the quarter for May is Courtney Fogarty, Deputy City Clerk. In March, when social distancing became the norm, it was clear that meetings could not be conducted as usual and would have to be held virtually as allowed by an order of Governor DeSantis. This presented a unique challenge as many city meetings, such as city commission meetings and advisory and advocacy board meetings, would still have to comply with the Sunshine Law. The City Clerk's Office was tasked with coordinating these meetings, including noticing the public and ensuring their right to participate. Courtney jumped right in and quickly learned how to use GoToMeeting and GoToWebinar software. This included setting up meetings, training and other staff members, and conducting testing with city commissioners, board members, and staff to ensure a seamless transition for all parties. This was especially important for the city commission meetings, as any action taken at a meeting could be challenged without strict adherence to the Sunshine Law. Courtney used her passion for integrating technology into our work and her skill at collaborating with her coworkers to allow meetings to continue and the city business to continue moving forward during the stay-at-home order. The City of Largo was able to maintain resiliency during a time of uncertainty, and I have no doubt that the success we have had in conducting virtual public meetings is due in large part to Courtney's efforts. Now, our final two recipients are operational managers of the quarter. The first was from March, Robert Hatton, Building Official. Mr. Hatton has always been a very supportive manager. He inspires all of us to not only want to come back to work each day, but strive to always work at being a better person. He has a driving passion for the City of Largo's Building Department to be the best in Pinellas County. He's an asset to the Community Development Department and the City of Largo as a manager and collaborator. When looking for a new person for the division, he takes the personality of the candidate into consideration to hire for fit. He ensures that his team all fits cohesively to achieve the best results, and he treats the customers with the utmost importance at all times, whether it's someone who just wants to speak with him or someone who he has set up a meeting with that's an official. Mr. Hatton also takes the time to dig deep into the City of Largo Comprehensive Development Code and the Florida State Building Codes to see what he can do to get them the desired outcome. Congratulations, Robert, on this award. And our final recipient this evening, Phil Christman, Park Superintendent. Phil has been in the role of Park Superintendent for just under two years. In that time, he has done incredible work to raise morale at parks through excellent communication with frontline staff and implementing a variety of practices to increase collaboration and teamwork throughout the division. Staff now enjoy regular and frequent meetings, which keep them informed and engaged. During the past two years, he transitioned contractual ground services back to in-house park staff after a comprehensive assessment of the financial and operational benefit to the city. He is comfortable sharing leadership with the supervisors at parks, allowing them to grow and develop. He's a mentor. During the COVID-19 crisis, park staff remained on duty. Unlike the public recognition the first responders have received, park staff were hidden heroes. He kept his staff feeling appreciated and happy as they worked to complete projects and keep the city's landscaping and urban forest looking top-notch. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have citizens' comments. If you would like to speak about something on the agenda outside of the consent docket, please wait until that item comes up. Do we have any cards?
I have no cards.
And do we have any input from online?
We have none.
Thank you, Courtney. And since I have you here, congratulations on Employee of the Month for May.
Thank you.
Or Employee of the Quarter, I think. Next, we will move on to approval of the agenda.
I'd like to pull four. Move Approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Next is Approval of the Minutes from the regular meeting of June 2nd, 2020.
Second.
Any changes or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item five, Authorization to Settle the Injury Claims Resulting from a Motor Vehicle Accident Involving a City of Largo Police Vehicle for a Total Settlement of $40,500. Item six, Authorization to Purchase a 30-Ton Replacement Shiller for Fire Station 41 from Air Mechanical and Service Corporation in the Amount of $75,790.
You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket with our commission discussion as outlined in the commission papers.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Item number four, Mr. Holmes.
Anybody here from streets?
Yes.
I will make it short and sweet. Reading through this thing, we rent this thing for, what, three and a half months a year, four months a year, for $13,000 a month. What does this thing cost to buy?
Honestly, I don't have any information.
Okay. I looked one up today, okay? This was used, but it was warranted. It was $288,300, but I'm sure new is way more than... Henry, do you know?
Yeah, I was gonna... It's been... We did own one at one time, the other model, the Menzy Muck.
Menzy.
The Menzy. I was gonna guess about a quarter of a million, but it may have been higher, maybe in the neighborhood of $400,000. And the big expense wasn't just the acquisition cost, but the ongoing maintenance costs were considerable.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of gathered that much. But we're only using this thing to clear the ditches, that's it?
That's correct.
There's no other utilization for it, you know, cutting the grass or anything? There's no attachments you can put on something like this? Do you know, Henry?
There are multiple attachments that can be used on it, but the primary use is to access large drainage ditches that we can't access from the banks. So this thing actually gets down into the ditch and cleans it out that way.
Yeah, I know. It's got four independent suspensions on it, four independent legs you can move all over.
Right, so it's a very specialized piece of equipment.
So you think it's cheaper just to rent it than to procure one?
Yes, absolutely. This was a project about a year ago. We actually had a group of employees that came to us that did a very impressive, in-depth analysis as to what the pros and cons were of leasing this equipment. We actually have a very experienced operator on staff now who actually used to work for the company that we rent this equipment from. So, yeah, we think it works out very well because of the acquisition, the initial purchase, if we were to buy one, you know, it's so expensive, and then the ongoing maintenance costs. So this is a good deal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve the request to spend an additional $20,000 for rental advertiser walking excavator for the street in Stormwater Division of Public Works.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Next up is item number seven.
Ordinance 2020-27 is second reading for the annexation of six properties located on the east side of US Highway 19 North, south of Haynes Bay Shore Road, and north of Whitney Road. The properties have land uses of commercial general, residential low, and transportation utility. Under Chapter 171 of the state statutes, a municipality is able to annex property that has not signed a petition for annexation as long as the area does not include any registered electors. More than 50% of the total acreage is owned by persons who have consented to the annexation by submitting a voluntary petition for annexation, and 50% of the total number of parcels are owned by persons who have consented to the annexation by submitting a voluntary petition for annexation. In this situation, we have no registered electors. 57% of the acreage being annexed tonight have petitions for annexation, and 67% of the total parcels have petitions for annexations. All requirements as specified in Chapter 171 of the state statutes have been met, including the advertisements which were published on Friday, May 22nd, and Friday, June 5th. All six properties are contiguous to the city's municipal boundaries through previous annexations, and together they help to reduce the size of existing enclaves. The ordinance proposes to annex property that is compact as that term is defined in Chapter 171 and are not enclaves. Therefore, it is staff's opinion that all of the properties may be annexed in accordance with Chapter 171. The Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners and Pinellas County Planning have been noticed and do not provide any objections. All city departments reviewed these annexations and indicated services can be provided to the properties. Staff is available for questions.
Ordinance number 2020-27, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, annexing the within-described tracts of land located at 16991 and 17101, US Highway 19 North, along with surrounding properties on the east side of US Highway 19 North, south of Haynes Bay Shore Road, and north of Whitney Road, Pinellas County, Florida, and contiguous to the existing city limits of the City of Largo, Florida, with city lane use designation of commercial general, residential low, and transportation utility, redefining the corporate boundary of the City of Largo to include said addition according to the provisions of Chapter 171 Florida statutes, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any public comment online?
We do not.
Questions, Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you. Put your map back up there, please. Do you... Is there a developer who's looking at this right now?
There is interest in the three properties on south.
On the frontage road?
On the frontage, yeah.
Okay.
And so they're looking at doing apartments.
All right, because I know there's an apartment complex going in on Whitney. Isn't that Whitney where they're going in on the corner there? Whitney, I'm pretty sure that's where it is. You'd have to go south of that picture. Okay.
I believe so, yeah.
That was my only question.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance number 2020-27 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Feed the cat.
Mr. Carroll, are you still with us? Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is item number eight.
The item in front of you is Resolution 2271, which is approving the establishment of a business tax receipt amnesty program. Last August, Building Official Robert Hatton and Community Standards Manager Tracy Schofield presented an update on the city's business tax receipt program. It was at that time that you all supported the proposal to establish a business tax receipt amnesty program for 2021 to assist existing established businesses that are non-compliant and that do not have a valid business tax receipt. Resolution 2271 establishes an amnesty program to waive late fees and delinquent taxes. If approved, the amnesty will begin on July 1st and run through December 31st of 2020. Any business owning the city late fees for failure to obtain a business tax receipt for any fiscal year will be eligible to have their delinquent business tax receipts and late fees waived as long as they apply for a 2021 business tax receipt. I'd like to let you know that Building Official Hatton is here with me tonight, and we would both be glad to answer any questions that you may have on this resolution.
Resolution number 2271, a resolution of the City of Largo, Florida, establishing a business tax receipt amnesty program for late fees and delinquent taxes, authorizing the Development Controls Officer to establish administrative procedures necessary to implement the business tax receipt amnesty program and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public input on this?
I have no cards.
Any input online?
I see none.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
I move to approve Resolution number 2271.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Smith.
About how many do we see that might be out there, delinquent at the moment?
Again, that's a difficult question to really answer because we don't know. We come across it. I would tell you, we had a discussion earlier today. We realized that there were quite a few individuals because when we were doing our business continuity program and when the county was doing their CARES program, we ran across numerous ones who did not have a business tax receipt with us, and that also kind of helped push this whole concept of, okay, we need to get this done.
And I see the dates that you say it's going to go into effect, and I really like that. How are we going to get the word out to those businesses and to also the community, like the Chamber of Commerce and those?
Yeah, so tomorrow morning, we actually have a Chamber of Commerce meeting where we will be announcing, if you all pass this, of what's going on. It'll obviously be part of all of our social media campaigns, and we will work, hopefully, with the Largo leader to get the message out as well and let them know in addition to that. Plus, over the course of this whole epidemic, we've been really fortunate and have been able to build a significant email database of all the businesses in the community, and we're also going to do outreach through that.
Thank you so much.
Can you tell me briefly how the late fees work? If somebody doesn't pay their business tax receipt, how... To what extent those late fees accrue?
I'm gonna let the professional talk about that one. That's his side of the business.
I don't know about professional. We'll do our best. So the late fees are all based on state statute, and in that statute, if someone doesn't pay, I believe it's every 30 days, so the October 1st is when they're... When they start, and at the end of that 30 days, it's a... I believe it's a 5%, but I don't have that number in front of me. And that percentage goes up each month, up to a maximum of 25% if they're late. So this would eliminate that for those people that didn't pay or those who didn't know they needed a business tax receipt. It would help them out tremendously. And to answer, if I can, to answer your question just briefly, it looks like from what we sent out last year was about 4,400 BTRs. We've received 3,116, so that's a pretty big number, but a lot of businesses are not in business anymore, so there's a lot of anomalies with that. We also went back as far as we could go and grab as many records in our system and mail those out to people. So we may have sent out a number of invoices to people that were not in business, or maybe they were duplicates because someone else is in that space. And as far as there was... I had something else, but it just disappeared. Sorry.
That's right.
Happens to me all the time.
Any other questions from the commission? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 There we go. I think that was seven. Motion passes seven-zero. Thank you. Next up is item number nine, ordinance number 2020-30.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to talk about tonight a couple of additions to our ordinance, Code of Ordinance Utilities, Chapter 23, regarding the EPA's amalgam rule and the hazardous environmental... I'm sorry. And the hazardous waste pharmaceutical rule revision. I I have a PowerPoint, I'm not exactly sure how this actually works, to show you, so, I gather, it's, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to talk about the dental amalgam rule quickly, and then a little bit about the hazardous waste pharmaceutical rule revision. Is there, okay. This is, the dental amalgam rule has just been recently issued by the EPA. This final rule requires dentists to install amalgam separators to keep dental amalgam out of the waste stream. Dental amalgam contains heavy metals like mercury and the like, and so we are being required to cause dentists to be able to put these in. The rule became effective on June 14th, 2017, and the real important part about all of this, it was adopted by the state, and the state requires us as a public utility to enforce the rule. So, from the standpoint of what the rule actually does, next slide, please. So it, it creates a new category of industrial users called dental users, dental industrial users for us. It requires those who are discharged into our waste stream to install those amalgam separators. The amalgam separators give a 95% minimum level of efficiency of removal of dental amalgam, and they also have to implement some best management practices for, to prevent the mercury from being discharged to the, to the waste stream. There are two categories of users, one's a new user, that's anybody that comes into business after the rule, and then there are existing users who have been discharging to the system before the rule. The first ones, the new users, have to be in compliance when they start up, when they begin discharging, and they have to submit a compliance certification to our department, and the existing dental users have to comply by the compliance deadline, which is July of this year, July the 14th of 2020, and then they have to submit a certification. So, certification and compliance, many, many dentists that we have are already in compliance, and the others have to certify that they will come into compliance by the deadline. Can I have the next slide, please? What we have to do in environmental services is that we have to ensure that those dental users actually, that are located within the service system, meet all of the requirements, meaning that they have a compliance separator, and that they have issued to us a certification that they're in compliance, and that they're going to maintain them using some best management practices. We also have to revise the sewer use ordinance, which is why I'm actually here today, to revise the ordinance, to give us a legal authority to, to enforce it. So as of today, we have submitted this revised ordinance to you for approval. We've also followed up with all of the area dentists that were identified in our sewer service area, and sent them out the notice that they have to comply, and then have received back from many of them certifications that they have or intend to comply by the deadline. Our job at this point in time is to stay on that track and to make sure that they meet those requirements. We do not actually have any additional enforcement requirements beyond that, but to maintain it. So it's kind of sort of strange, because normally, we permit our users, we follow up, we inspect them every year, we do all these enforcement activities if in fact they're not compliant, but as it stands right now, because this is such a new rule, it's being, it's evolving, so today, we just have to make sure people have the right stuff and that they have the right letters saying that they are in compliance. That's the rule. The second revision to the ordinance is the hazardous waste pharmaceutical, rule revisions to the pharmaceutical hazardous waste disposal. Can I have the next slide, please? Okay, the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency also has, has made a revision to the hazardous pharmaceutical waste rule. That came into effect last February 2019, and the goals of the rules are specific for the language that we have to include in there, but, but there are some goals here that are really kind of sort of, they're all important, but the important part for environmental services that, is that, that this rule revision eliminates the intentional searing of hazardous waste pharmaceuticals. The purpose is to keep people from flushing pharmaceuticals down the drain, or pouring off any residuals or down, down the drain, or flushing them in the toilet, because these things end up in the water, and they end up in the organisms, they end up affecting organisms in the water. So this is, that's the gist of it, because actually hazardous pharmaceutical waste actually falls under solid waste disposal, but, but our concern is the, the searing of hazardous waste pharmaceuticals. Next slide, please. There was an effective date, as I mentioned, and the specific sewer prohibition applies to all healthcare facilities, including healthcare facilities that are considered very small quantity generators, and all reverse distributors. And this is important because these are some of the areas where these types of, the actions of these individuals can cause these, these pharmaceuticals to make their way into the waste stream. Actually, the Environmental Protection Agency discourages you putting anything pharmaceutical down the toilet or the drain, so, but the sewer prohibition is, is the most important to us. Next slide, please. So here's some additional information, but the gist of it is that our involvement is mandated by the department, is mandated by the EPA and then by the state. So, the sewer, well, the actual revision, rule revision was effective, and the, the effective date of the sewer prohibition was August 21st, 2019, and so we've been given instructions by FDEP to, to update our ordinance. So I know this is a lot in a relatively small space, and I kind of ran through the slides, but the gist of it is, is that we have to make the changes in order to be in compliance with EPA and Environmental Protection Agency and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. It also gives us an opportunity to be proactive and to help to reach the goal of eliminating these types of discharges, and are keeping these substances out of the waste, out of our water, drinking water, wastewater, water streams. I have a last slide there that says that we have to do this, so I'm just be, I'd be happy to let you also know that if you approve this motion, it would require a second reading and public hearing on July the 7th, as opposed to what's showing on the agenda, which is June the 2nd. So I would be happy to entertain any questions you have regarding this change.
Ordinance number, sorry, ordinance number 2020-30, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending Section 23-117F, Section 23-118B, and enacting Section 23-118P to establish regulations for dental amalgam and pharmaceutical hazardous waste, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any comments or input from the internet?
I see none.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Hi, Vivian.
Hi.
Can you describe the dental separator?
It kind of looks like a tall canister, let me just say this, we are working on visual models, we have not had any real additional training, but it effectively looks like a container, a tall canister, that has a compartment that would hold the, the waste. But it, it works on the principle of allowing that waste, the solid waste to settle, and so you would have fluid on top, and so water would pass through, but the separator requires the separation of the amalgam to, to fall to the bottom.
And the older dental offices, and there's still some in Largo, when they're through working in your mouth, it's, it's like a porcelain bowl right next to you with the water running, and you're supposed to spit into that thing, and that goes right into the sewer.
Right.
Well, the question is, so they have to take that device and hook it into the separator, correct?
There would be some plumbing associated with getting any, the rest, yes.
Okay. Once their separator is full, what do they do with it then?
It's considered, the separator contains what's considered, I mean, this is hazardous waste, and so you have to have a service, there is either, two things, two ways to do it, but, but the, but the either way involves having a place to offload the contents of the chamber. So it is, it is considered hazardous waste, there are services out there that will remove it, and you would probably have to have one of those services, because it does have to have proper disposal.
Okay.
So I can't clean my own hazardous, I can't clean my own dental amalgam separator if I were a dentist.
Okay, but environmental services, you, unlike code enforcement, you have no enforcement on that?
We don't have any enforcement from the standpoint, we are not going to go in and check those separators, but what we can do, if we find that we believe someone is discharging, we would do what we would do with anyone that becomes an industrial user, and we would be able to set up surveillance some type of way, to the extent possible. But again, as I mentioned, these rules are, are evolving, and the training is evolving as well, but the likelihood of, if we suspected, say, a dental practice of doing so, we would probably try and test the waters downstream of the, of the facility, and we would be looking for concentrations of those types of heavy metals.
I don't want to get into the sleuthing aspect of this thing. Second question, how are you going to enforce the hazardous pharmaceutical thing?
Hazardous waste pharmaceuticals, again, I get, as I explained, is, is actually solid waste, it goes under RICRA, it's not us, but we are like the co correspondent, whatever the, the right word is, that, so we, we establish that it's illegal to put it down the sewer.
Right.
It's not our requirement to go in and say to a, a, a healthcare facility that you are doing this. Someone will do that, because they will be looking at records and, you know, of the disposal of, of those pharmaceuticals, those hazardous waste pharmaceuticals. It's not our job to do that. Our job is to support that effort, and so what we would wind up doing is doing the sewer sleuthing, to make sure that we can support that, and then, and, and having it in ordinance establishes that it's illegal, so it shouldn't be there.
Okay, I, I guess I was looking at this from the point of view of the average household.
It does not, it doesn't, it's only, right, it doesn't go to households.
Strictly hospitals, nursing homes, ALS.
Yes, nursing homes, big, big users, right.
Not the individual homeowner, although, see, the, the police department does this, maybe they should do it more often, is when you're disposing of the, you know, unused medications, they have these drop-off points you can go to. We used to have one at the police department, it, it's no longer there for separate reasons, but I, I think a lot of this is going to be education too, because, you know, you, you can clean up an ALF, but if you've got 100 homeowners who are dumping it down the toilet, it's self-defeating. You also have an education aspect here.
I, I do believe that EPA and the EP believe the same, that it is about education. I do also believe that, you know, the belief is that if you get 80% of the, if, if 80% of the, of the, of the, the problem is, resolves in those situations where you're big users, where you have a concentration of, of those items, it's, you can, you can readily attack those, but these typically are not, this is not aimed at the individual homeowner, although they do recommend no flushing of anybody, all of us, it's recommended.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just as a point of information with the dental amalgam, the dentist's office, if they're taking x-rays, they've already got a similar thing collecting the heavy metals from the x-ray processing. That's been a rule for a long, long time. If you're processing x-rays, you have to collect the, the silvers that come off of the films. So, I know it's a different part, it's probably a different part of their plumbing or whatever, but they're very familiar, dentists are very familiar with that process, and, and, and this probably isn't, isn't a surprise nor anything new to them.
Okay, in your office, do you catch it?
I do.
Okay.
The, the, and also...
Not dental amalgam, but silver from, and, and what I do is I sell that canister, because it's full of silver now, to, to a recycler, and they, they melt it down.
And I just wanted to also say that, I lost it, but, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay.
It's, it's weird with all this people, like people behind curtains and stuff, you know, you're talking to people that aren't even here.
Yeah.
So it's interesting. It gets us off of our game a little bit, so I certainly understand. Any other questions from the commission?
I move to approve ordinance number 2020-30 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on July 7, 2020. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Commissioner Carroll, are you with us?
I am, and I voted aye. Thank you, sir.
Very good, thank you. Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10.
Ordinance number 2020-33 is an amendment to Chapter 20 of the Solid Waste City of Largo Code of Ordinances. This amendment was identified last year during the development of the City of Largo American with Disabilities Transition Plan, which was also approved by resolution last year as well. Identified asked, the transition plan asked that we look at our city ordinances for any omissions or errors dealing with the American with Disabilities Act. This one in particular, while in the bulk waste portion of the solid waste chapter, it does state that you can't put your solid waste across a sidewalk, a driveway, or a roadway to prevent cars, bicycle, or pedestrians. It was silent in the container portion of it, the residential container. So this amendment allows for a similar statement where containers, residential containers can't be placed in alleys, driveways, sidewalks that prevent vehicles, bicycles, and particularly pedestrians from being blocked through there. So approving this amendment would then allow a clear path on the sidewalk for citizens with disabilities. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ordinance number 2020-33, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances, Chapter 20, Solid Waste, Article 3, Placement of Waste, by amending Section 20-71, Placement of Containers, Subsection A, to prevent solid waste containers from being placed in any manner which would interfere with drainage, vehicles, or pedestrians, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any public input online? I do have a question.
I see none.
Thank you. I do have a question, there's a lot of sidewalks that are right up against the traffic, the roadway. How far in to a yard can our solid waste trucks reach to pick up a solid waste, a residential solid waste can? Because in the downtown area, for example, not where I live, but where my office is, generally, that whole road puts their solid waste can right in the middle, blocking the whole sidewalk, and I assume it's because, I don't, I don't know if the, if the truck can reach all the way into the grass or not.
I, I don't know the specific dimensions, but you're absolutely right. I'm sure there's scenarios in, in the city where short of putting it in your actual driveway apron versus on the sidewalk would be the residence-only choice.
Okay, so, so, so do you, do you know how far it can reach if it could re, I mean...
I'd have to get back to you on that, Mayor.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I suspect that most of the people that live and, and have those trashcans would rather just put it in the yard and leave the sidewalk open, but they don't, they don't want their trashcan to get skipped, because it's not within reach. So that would be important to know, I think, moving forward. Commissioner Holmes?
I think it can go like four and a half feet. I think that's how far the reach goes.
I should ask you in the first place.
I am so happy to see this thing, because as a bicycle rider who uses the sidewalk, I get so annoyed between the garbage cans and the people who park their cars on the sidewalk, which, who's going to enforce this?
Well, like everything, it's for our Community Standards Division in Community Development, it's a matter of prioritization that obviously, of course, we have more ordinances than humanly possible that can be enforced, and we do know, not being in that department, that you've given them directions on what their priorities are. If there was a complaint for it, they would have... If there was a complaint for it, they would have the mechanism now to enforce it. I'm not 100% sure that there would be driving around on solid waste pickup day looking for these, but they now have a mechanism to enforce it if it was reported to them.
Okay, well, what's, what's the penalty if you do this? If they leave a can out on the sidewalk and it's there for several days?
I, I don't know the penalty side, but we can certainly get back to you on that.
But I don't think this is a police matter, this is, this is code enforcement.
No, certainly not.
So, I mean, I, I think you'd have to go to code enforcement and let them come up with some type of penalty on the thing. I have another question, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
I move to approve ordinance number 2020-33 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on July 7, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next up is ordinance number 2020-34.
Thank you, Mayor. Similarly, ordinance 2020-34 is an amendment to Chapter 21 of the Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Spaces portion of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances. Very similar, American with Disabilities screening during the transition plan we developed last year. In the right-of-way portion of this ordinance, it was missing the statement that said, if you do have to close a right-of-way, or in this case, close a sidewalk, you're obligated to either have a safe travel path through that closure, or have an ADA and State of Florida traffic-compliant detour for pedestrians around that. So this is just a cleanup amendment to making sure, again, that our contractors and developers and folks working in the right-of-way, we, we have a means of having them provide safe travel ways through or around construction zones in the right-of-way. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Ordinance number 2020-34, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances, Chapter 21, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 4, Right-of-Way Utilization, Division 1, Generally, by adding Section 21-80 to ensure any right-of-way closures are compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any public input online?
I see none.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Jerry, how would this work on Rosary Road between Clearwater Largo Road and Missouri? Because periodically, I'd ride my bike up there, and it was closed, closed. I mean, the sidewalk, they had their equipment laying on it, so you couldn't do it that way, and then everything else was just torn up. How would this, how would this affect that?
In, in most cases, the pedestrian detour route would mirror the, the automobile detour route, not necessarily saying in that area of the city, the detour route for a pedestrian would be a, a short trip by any means.
That's a long trip.
Yes, and, and the, this ordinance in the American with Disabilities Act says you have to provide it. You, you, you're not obligated to create a new route that doesn't exist for a temporary means. So it, it's an inconvenience to all citizens, bicyclists, vehicles, and pedestrians with detour routes, and that's why we always strive, one, we identify them, and when we have our neighborhood meetings, we talk about that. We try to make sure that if there are residents with disabilities in the area, we try to elicit that information during our meeting, our neighborhood meetings and project design reviews, so we can make sure that specific individuals that could be impacted know of that specifically, and are able to take means and measures to be ready for that challenge or come up with alternative means of transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance number 2020-34 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on July 7, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes, any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up is item number 12.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and Honored City Commissioners. This item is the first reading of ordinance 2020-38, a budget amendment in the amount of $330,000 in the Community Development Department's Community Development Block Grant Fund, and $419,000 in the Community Development Department State Housing Initiatives Partnership Fund for additional program revenue and expenditures. The $330,000 in the CDBG fund accounts for the allocation to the City of Largo through the Federal CARES Act program. This funding will be used in prevention, response, and recovery from COVID-19, and the Community Development Department has added an item to the August 11th City Commission Work Session to discuss more specific activities for use of these funds. The $419,000 in the SHIP Fund accounts for additional program revenues and prior-year rollover balance. This funding will be used for continuing programs funded by SHIP, including owner-occupied housing rehab, down payment assistance, affordable housing development, and the Resident Assistance Program. Staff is available and happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2020-38, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2020 budget adopted by Resolution Number 2224 by appropriating revenues and expenditures in the amount of $330,000 within the Community Development Department CDBG, CDBG Fund, and $419,000 within the Community Development SHIP Department Fund for additional program expenditures, providing for an effective date.
Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any online comments?
I see none.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
I move to approve ordinance number 2020-38 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on July 7, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is a staff report, item number 13.
The purpose of this item is to request direction to proceed with initiating a comprehensive development code amendment for subsection 14.1.3, which would modify what are called set-aside requirements for affordable housing developments. Excuse me. Recently, the city was approached by Habitat for Humanity with a proposal to develop a single-family subdivision on a site within the planned expansion area of the Clearwater Largo Road Community Redevelopment District. As part of discussions on this project, staff looked at our requirements for affordable housing developments and concluded that the requirements are no longer really in step with the market, the community needs, and some of the financing mechanisms that are out there. So this evening, we're seeking your direction to begin the process to amend Chapter 14 to bring those requirements more in line with, with some of those factors. We'll return to the City Commission with an ordinance that has more specific language for your review when we go through the process of reviewing this with our Community Development Advisory Board and Planning Board, and we would expect to be back before you in September. Let me reiterate, though, that we're not doing this for any particular project, but simply have the opportunity to review those requirements in the context of an individual request. So let me talk for a minute about what we mean by the term "set aside." This term refers to the percentage of units in a designated affordable housing development that are required to be affordable versus market rate units. So it's referring to that percentage or mixture of affordable and market rate. Affordable units are considered to be set aside and must be leased or sold to eligible low-income families at an affordable rate. Currently, what that, what our code says is that affordable housing developments not located within the Clearwater Largo Road Community Redevelopment District or certain special area plan areas such as Largo Mall are restricted to a maximum percentage of affordable units, the set aside is 30%, with 70% being market rate. And this is very consistent with what the tradition that the city has had, trying to promote mixed-income communities, mixed income and diverse communities, and it's really specifically a goal in our comprehensive plan housing element. But we are proposing to evaluate the CDC requirement to allow a greater mix of affordable units, similar to what's already permitted in the Clearwater Largo Road District, which allows up to 70% of those units to be set aside for affordable housing. We would also explore putting in new language that would require, allow even a higher percentage, higher than 70% of affordable units, when projects meet certain criteria and enter into a development agreement with the City of Largo. Rather than expanding citywide, the increased set aside, that, that increase, we're looking at simply putting that additional latitude within our community development block target areas, so areas that are identified as being in need of revitalization. One thing I would like to note, that there is a specific policy in the comprehensive plan that calls for certain types of affordable housing development projects to be mixed income, so they could not go up to 100% affordable, and that's specifically Housing Policy 1.3.6 that talks about projects that are in partnership with the Pinellas County, County Housing Finance Authority and are in their land trust. So that would be a single-family development of the type that's contemplated by Habitat for Humanity. I did want to mention, though, that we do have planned in our work program a much more comprehensive revision of our affordable housing ordinance. For a number of reasons, there are some provisions with regard to density bonuses we think could be improved. We'd like to address accessory dwelling units. We'd like to address development on substandard lots, which is something that the City Commission has asked us to do. We also have our new CDBG five-year plan, and the county is undertaking a county-wide housing strategy, so there's just really a lot of different policy issues out there that I think will allow us to make a more comprehensive revision. But, so what we propose to do is just look very specifically at the housing set aside requirements. So if the City Commission does wish to proceed and ask staff to initiate this CDC amendment, we will go to the Community Development Advisory Board in July. We would schedule a public hearing with the Planning Board, which would be in August, and would expect to be back before you in September. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I have Planning Manager Rick Perez here as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Question about the, are there, what's the highest percentage of affordable housing in one project or parcel that exists currently in, in the City of Largo that you know of?
We have one that was in the Largo Mall Special Area Plan, it's Pinellas Heights, and that is 100% affordable, and it's a senior housing project. So in that case, we did go to 100% by going through the process that's outlined in the code. I will tell you, though, that, and, and it's an important distinction, there are affordable housing developments that are not designated by the City of Largo and do not fall under this Chapter 14. So for example, if a project such as Whispering Palms on 16th Avenue Southeast, if they receive their financing through, for Pinellas County or other agencies, and do not come to the City of Largo seeking either financial assistance through our SHIP program or a housing density bonus, those projects are, do not fall under the restriction for these set-asides.
So there'd be, there'd be no limit on this set aside? They could set aside 100%?
Correct. It's only those projects that either require a density bonus or want the ADHD designation to take advantage of the, the SHIP funding that we can provide.
Okay. Is there, is there anything that would prevent an organization like Habitat for Humanity to, to, I mean, we're talking about the density of affordable housing in a neighborhood or in an area, but nothing would prevent any organization from buying an individual parcel and building an affordable house that's in some type of program, and then going to the one next door and doing the same thing, and kind of going down the whole street? Am I right?
No, there's, there's not, and infill development on single-family lots is another carve-out in, in, for, these set-asides don't apply to infill, you know, ones, one and two. It's when you get into a development that is at a production, you know, level, multiple lots or, or apartments that these come into play.
So the, like, the, the small, the project that the city did not too far from here, really cool little project, I forget the name of it.
Roosevelt Groves.
Yes, that's, that was all affordable homes.
I'm sorry, Eleanor, Eleanor Oaks.
Eleanor Oaks.
Yes.
We got there.
Yeah, because those were individual, you know, individual infill lots, it wasn't designated in this way.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Robb?
When, I just want to make a kind of clarification. When we talk about low-income housing, and especially in this case, and obviously we don't want to, you know, legislate towards one project or another, but in these type of projects, when we talk about low-income housing, we're, we're talking about workforce housing, though, right? I mean, what's, so what are the qualifications that would make it low-income?
Affordable.
Or affordable?
Affordable. Specifically, Chapter 14 talks about households which earn up to 120% of the area median income.
So in, in, with that number...
So that's kind of the top of the range that would be considered affordable. What you'll find, though, is when you get into density bonuses, it, you look at things like 80% of the median income, 50% of the median income, 30% of the median income, so it really depends upon what type of density bonuses they're seeking, or whether they're obtaining financing through different programs, might have different set-asides.
So what would 120% of that be? Do you know offhand?
120% for SHIP.
In, 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 like...
So it depends on household size.
Okay.
So let's say a household of four people, at 120% of the median is 84,360.
84,000?
Yeah. A, a single-person household, at 120% is 59,000.
So we're absolutely talking about workforce housing?
Absolutely. You're, you're talking about teachers and police officers.
Yeah, people who, yeah, right, right, absolutely. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to put, make sure that that clarification was out there before, you know, we get any, into any type of conversation about, again, low income or, you know, what the difference might be.
Unfortunately, those are the terms the state...
No, I, I understand. I just want to, like I said, I just want to make sure that that's clear, clear for everybody.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Since you mentioned density bonuses, and I don't see any other lights on people that have any question, I'd like to, I know I've said this a few times, but like, in the Clearwater Largo Road District, providing a percentage of affordable housing is the only way that you can get a density bonus, and I'd like to make sure that we look at providing other options for developers to, to get a density bonus, not only in the Clearwater Largo Road District, but in the other activity centers, because there's other aspects that we would like developers to do that are good for the city as a whole, not just affordable housing, I'm fine with that, but also, you know, mixed-use development, or, or a certain amount of green space, or good connections to the trail. All these things are things that are good for the community and good for the city, and I think those should be avenues for... avenues for which people that are developing could get a higher density. We know that not everybody wants to build, or, some of the developers that come to us, they don't want to build affordable housing, for whatever reason. And I think that they should be able to access higher density if they're willing to put into their project the assets that we think are really good, and are, think that would be very good for our community. So, I know I've told you this before, but since we mentioned density bonuses, I wanted to mention that. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Smith?
With the Habitat, how are we working with them, and how's that going along, and how's it looking, best way to put it?
There are representatives from Habitat here this evening, listening in, but I did get an opportunity to talk to Ken Rush today, and had a very good conversation. They are moving forward with the seller. They're under contract for property. They are moving forward with Pinellas County Housing, who is providing penny-three local option sales tax monies for the land purchase, as well as moving forward with their own board on the project. So, it looks very positive, and...
Could we stay, be kept in the loop of that? Such as a big project that I think is important in our area.
Yes, we'd be happy to keep you updated.
Thank you.
And the other, the only other thing that I would like to talk about briefly is we, Habitat is a known entity. We understand a lot of things about Habitat. Some, most of us have helped build houses for Habitat. So, I want to make sure that we don't build the policy with blinders on, looking at an organization like Habitat, that we're very clear of the product that we're going to get, and we know that it's going to be, they're good public partners, and we know that, we know what we're going to get, right? So, I want to make sure that the policy is written for folks other than Habitat as well, so that, so that in the end, we get something as good as what we know Habitat will do.
Absolutely.
On a different parcel or whatever. Any other questions? All right. Well, we look forward to seeing it in the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zimmert? Commissioner Robinson?
Just real quick, I'm looking forward to ride along this Friday with the Largo Police Department. I believe Commissioner Smith is going as well, and I just want to call shotgun.
As long as you don't put me in handcuffs.
That's all I have for tonight.
Vice Mayor Holt?
Yes, just congratulations to all the employees of the quarter. Thank you for all that you do, above and beyond. And I don't know if anybody else saw this article in the St. Pete Times anymore.
The Tampa Bay.
It's called the St. Pete Times.
Whatever this newspaper is that comes out every week. But they did an amazing article about the City of Largo. Just the headline, centrally located and priced right, Largo is a value leader in Pinellas family homes. The author was correspondent Nick Stubbs, who is a lifelong resident of Largo and a Largo High School graduate. But he really covered some really great things about the city and the people that live here, and the things that our city offers, between parks and recreation, and cultural center, police department, fire department, and he covered, did a really nice job. So, if you get a chance to, please read that article. And also, please, you know, my prayers are going out to our police department and our fire department, all of our first responders that are out there every day, putting their lives out before ours. Just praying for protection for all of them, and respect, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Still got a hard copy of the paper?
Yeah, I do.
What is that? I haven't seen one of those in a long time. I read it.
You said that Largo is the best bang for the buck in the Tampa Bay region, whether you're...
I mean, he said so much, so it's hard to cover. So, you really do need to read the article.
Two-bedroom house up to a mansion, because we have everything.
We have, we have it all.
Thank you for bringing that up. Commissioner Carroll?
Dip down a roof.
We'll get back to you if you chime in. Commissioner Smith?
I would just like to, I look forward to the ride-along with the police department on Friday with Commissioner Robinson.
Riding in the back.
Yeah. I won't get tased this time. But also, I really appreciate staff in the police department for posting the update on our police policies on Facebook, and engaging the community, and looking at ways we can get more people involved with the conversation. And I really appreciate that. And I believe our department is, and our city is very transparent, and I really appreciate everything they do, and our citizens, I believe, are very supportive. And I, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you, and I thank our citizens who are out there protesting for what they care about, and I appreciate those who are doing it peacefully and respecting each other. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Finger?
Congratulations to employees of the quarter. I always think it's great that we have the opportunity to recognize them and hear their stories. And also, thank you to all the other employees that we may not have seen for a long time due to COVID. So, thank you to everybody, and to you guys as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Holmes isn't on here, so we're going to skip. No, I'm just kidding. It isn't on here, but Commissioner Holmes, do you have anything? You're not on there.
I know. I noticed it. I wasn't going to say anything, you know.
I apologize.
I'll make Diane feel guilty. Henry, I would like to have a discussion about the false alarms that we are responding to. Apparently, there are some businesses in the City of Largo that have become chronic false alarm folks, mostly for the fire, but also for the police department. And, I mean, one of the fire guys, one of the captains came up. He said, "You really, we need to do something about this, because we're getting inundated with them, and we're showing up for the false alarm, which is costing the city time and money. And I think we need to set up an ordinance that, you know, you got a grace period here, you can have so many of them, but after that, there's going to be a fee."
Yeah, we can look into that. We do have an ordinance regarding police alarms, but I don't believe we have one for fire alarms, so we'll have to look into that.
I think there's a registration for either, and, and the fee is like $150, and that's it. And so, if you have more than two or something like that, false alarms in a year, you have to pay that fee. If you don't have any false alarms, it's waived. I do think there may be an option, or a thing, if you get more than five, you start to get charged per alarm or something like that. We should maybe look at something.
Yeah, I mean, I talked, I talked to them today, and he said, we didn't get into the specific business, but he said, "This thing has become chronic, that we have to respond to all these things," and he said, "It's a malfunction of the alarm."
Yeah, we can look into that for sure. Yes.
All right. Maybe I'll be on the next week's agenda. You never know. That's all.
The only thing that I wanted to mention is, I know that we've got a lot of stuff going on in the world right now, but it's almost hurricane season, so get ready for that. I mentioned yesterday to a group that the best way to shelter for a hurricane, if you're not in an evacuation zone, is in your own house. Probably the least hospitable place is a shelter during COVID-19. So, if you can stay at home, make sure that you are preparing now, so that you can stay at home if there's a named storm coming. If you're in an evacuation zone, you'll have to have a plan to evacuate. And again, the best place is in a house of a family member, or a friend, or somewhere that's not in an evacuation zone. Your last resort should be a shelter. Shelter's going to have a whole bunch of people that you don't know in a small space, and that's exactly what we're trying not to do as a community right now, to stop the spread of COVID-19. So, make, please plan accordingly, and kind of think about that now, when we're not looking down the barrel of a storm. So, that's my, that's my message for today. Mr. Schubert?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Action items?
I have three things. A request by Mayor Brown that staff provide information on the reach of solid waste vehicles when picking up containers from yards. A request by Commissioner Holmes that staff provide information on the penalties for violating ordinance number 2020-33. A request by Commissioner Holmes that staff look at alarm regulations to address the number of false alarms that the police department responds to.
And fire.
And fire.
If there's nothing else, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.